Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, 2013. Time being 7:05, we're going to get started. We normally open with the Pledge of Allegiance, but we had a reorganization meeting just prior to this, and we did the pledge in the other room. After voting, I'm the chairman for the next year, Mark Gallivan. Mike Berry remains the vice chair. Nancy McKenzie will be the clerk. And Cliff Snuffer is number five, which was his request.
Thank you, Mike.
He wanted to sit closest to Michael Boynton. So, I also wanted to mention that Chris Timson is stuck in traffic and is tied in on the phone remotely, and at some point during the meeting, he will likely show up in person and join us. I just wanted to say congratulations to Mike Berry and Cliff Snuffer for winning the election. Welcome back for Cliff, welcome back for Mike. I did also want to thank all the candidates who ran for office. I know that it's sometimes hard for people to carve up enough time out of the busy schedules to be a candidate for election and to actually serve, but I think it's very important for people to be volunteers and be involved in town government. So whether you won, lost, or tied, I guess there was one tie, congratulations for running and trying to be involved and being involved, and I encourage you to keep that up. I also did want to thank the 11% of the voters who did turn out to vote. I thought that was a very disappointing number. I think that local control is a thing we have the most ability to keep an eye on, keep an eye on local spending, all those kinds of things. And I think it's important that our local voters get active in the local elections and get to know who their RTMs are and selectmen and school committee and all those kinds of things. So I would encourage people in the future to make sure you can get out to vote or vote in advance with an absentee ballot if possible. I don't have any announcements or proclamations today.
Could I just?
Yes.
I just wanted to add one thing about for RTMs, there are some precincts that still have openings, right? Did I hear that in the final count that there isn't any that need to do a?
No, there were a couple of ties.
Oh, they're, okay, all right then.
What I've heard is that ties will be broken at town meeting by a caucus prior to the start of town meeting, so.
Okay, so they did all that.
First item on our agenda is the vote, is the request from Norfolk County Agricultural School to use the old Fisher ball field for parking from June of this year through May of next year for staff parking.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I certainly understand the request from the Aggie, and we have been very cooperative with them in the past for their graduations when we allow the parking there, but this is obviously an extended period of time which could have an impact on our youth sports that do utilize that field, and more so. I'm also just concerned about the impact on the field itself. We've spent an awful lot of time and certainly an awful lot of money throughout town trying to upgrade our fields and to make our fields more sustainable, and I'm very concerned that certainly going through the entire winter and having vehicles parked there on a regular basis, that could create a problem. I'm sympathetic to the challenges that the Aggie school has as they're going through their reconstruction and their addition project there, but I would say that a carte blanche allowance, if you will, by the board is not something I would recommend, rather, if there is a case-by-case basis, much like we have with graduation, that they could approach and have a conversation with us, but that field would probably sustain near irreparable damage. I know that they would offer to bring it back to current conditions, if you will, but still, that's something that you essentially would be taking that field out of use for over a year, because you wouldn't, they couldn't possibly go through a cycle of parking on it, restore it, use it for play, and then park on it again.
Nancy?
Yes, and also, I mean, grass takes a while to establish that it would really be taking it out for two seasons, because they shouldn't play on it, just like when we refurbished some of our other fields. And then, you know, we did put out a comment from recreation to see, you know, what their thought was, and that, they did come back with the comments that that field is, you know, too busy. So I think that we should, you know, respect our staff's opinion, and then my opinion, I mean, I was the one like two years ago that I was hesitant about graduation. We do put too much money, and the people in this town pay taxes to keep up our fields that I think to let someone use it as parking is a little bit, you know, not necessary. I know the agricultural, the Norfolk County has, you know, there's a lot of land there that in part of their prep work for building, I mean, I think they should consider making themselves some sort of alternate parking on the agricultural land that they already have there.
Cliff?
Just getting back and taking a look at this, it raises an eyebrow. You ask yourself the most logical question of all is, why would we A, want to tie up a ball field for over a year, or about a year, and the other is, what is the demonstrated need? So what I did is, I took a field trip up to the area, and I noted with interest that on a two-day span, there were at least 40 empty spots in the 420 building, in the condos. That's two days of 40 empty spots. You would think that they would be the more observant of that opportunity to perhaps go visit with the ownership of the condo association. The other thing is, I took another trip around to the side, which is the most adjacent parking lot, and on a two-day period, there were 60, 6-0, empty spots. And I couldn't imagine for the life of me that they would have a need for 100 spots on a given basis, considering they want to talk about staff. But what it did conjure up, so therefore I would be against this particular proposal. With respect to the thought process, though, I found it interesting, because if you take a look at that particular field, if that has a strategic benefit to them, they have 189 acres scattered throughout that area, and maybe, just maybe, there would be some moderate interest in having a conversation about a potential swap where we could have their needs met and our field needs met, maybe to a little more defined basis. And that's just something I want to throw out for consideration, even though I know it is county land.
Mike, did you have anything you wanted to add? Mike Berry?
No.
You know, I'm against the idea of taking a field and converting it to parking for almost a year, especially since that field I know is heavily used, especially during the spring season. I did like Cliff's idea, if they'd like to come back and talk to us, I'd propose we vote it down. I think we'd be open to having a conversation if they wanted to, you know, get creative. That's always a good idea.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I can actually reach out to the superintendent if you'd like and have that conversation, because actually, that's a great idea, that's a very unique opportunity, especially it might not necessarily be, as it relates strictly to that specific site, but there's another site a little further up the street that has some potential benefit.
Mike?
I'll make a motion to deny.
I'm sorry. Chris, did you have a question?
Uh, no, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the only thing I would add is that we have a pretty good relationship with the Aggie, and I'm not in favor of this either, but I think we should find a way to present our no to them that lets them know that A, we're still willing to consider their requests on a, on a case-by-case basis, and that we're not saying no for the sake of no, it's because we just, we need the field at this point. So I don't know exactly, if we just have Michael communicate that, or if it's a letter that we send to them, I guess I defer to what Michael thinks, he deals with them on a day-to-day or on a more regular basis, so I just want to make sure we don't cut off a, yeah, the relationship.
Good point, Chris, thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, Walpole, David Lado is the chairman of the Board of Trustees, and certainly is very close to us through the Adams Farm Organization, and would understand, to Chris's point, that a no is not with any malice.
Yep, and as Michael Boynton said, we can reach out to them and sort of explain that while we said no, we're open to talking about any other ideas that may come along, so.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll give a call tomorrow, let them know that there is a letter coming with respect to the actual request, and also that we'd like to sit down and have a conversation.
Okay, that'd be great. Want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to deny the use of old Fisher ball field for staff parking as proposed in the request dated May 22nd, 2013, from Susan M. Green, Superintendent Director of the Aggie School.
Second. Any more discussion? Nope. All in, do I start with an "all in favor"? Do I have to start with? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, all in, I did say all in favor, yes, of denying.
Oh, all in favor of denying, I'm sorry. Restated again, all in favor of denying the request?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thanks for keeping me honest. Okay, moving on to item two, request from Valaris to place a park bench and two half-sized barrels of flowers outside of their facility on Main Street.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Valaris, as you know, is the martial arts center on Main Street right in downtown. They're at 955 Main Street. They would like to have an ability to have parents of their students or even pedestrians have an opportunity to sit on a bench outside, a bench or two outside, with a flower barrel. Now, they have a unique situation there, because they do have a little wider space with the sidewalk right there, so it can be accommodated. I just think that if the board is inclined to agree, that it has to be very clear that we are maintaining a minimum of a three-foot access, because it does have to, the sidewalk does at all times have to be made accessible for people with disabilities, number one, and number two, that there would be a caveat that any, that the barrel, that the benches would be removed as the season wraps up. So in other words, as we get into the fall and certainly into winter, early, very early spring, that the benches and the barrels would not be there to allow for better snow removal.
Anybody have any comments, or Nancy?
I have a comment.
Go right ahead, Chris.
I think, you know, having been on the board for a while, I think this is the first time we've received this type of request, and at least the first time I've seen it. And while I think it's very well intentioned, we have to be careful about how we dole out public space, so to speak. Yeah, I don't know that I have any problem with this request, but I think we need to think out what we're going to do policy-wise if we face more of these, you know, it just, it seems like if everyone wants a park bench out in front of their, or wants something out in front of their establishment, that, you know, we could be running some issues where we have to say no to some and yes to others, and if we really want all these things out there. So, as an initial foray into it, you know, this seems well intentioned, but I think we need to come up with a more far-reaching, well, in the red, and a little bit of a policy as planned, it might be reasonable to put it in front of what.
Thanks, Chris. Nancy?
I agree with Chris's comments, and some of my thoughts were that it, number one, we could consider, you know, making sure that we say it's a single bench, make sure that it is sighted out by the building inspector or his designee. It needs to be removed, basically, probably along the lines of the parking ban, you know, the on-road parking, is that, when is that?
I'd say November through, November 1st or April 1st would be the best.
Would be the best, and, and then maybe we could do this, especially because it is the first time on a one-year renewal, to revisit it, see how it worked out, and then to just make sure to note, to maintain the three-foot accessibility.
Just picking up on what Selectman McKenzie said, I think that things of this nature along the same lines as what Chris was thinking ought to be clearly defined as provisional and under the auspices of Jack Me from not a policing perspective, but certainly from a common sense perspective, because it could become an encroachment to the walk space.
Thank you.
And I think, just so everybody's clear, this isn't the first time we've had a request for benches. I mean, to get to this point, to the board, I would say it is, but we've had Ravens Nest has inquired about outdoor seating, and we can't maintain a three-foot clearance. There is outdoor seating at one of the other restaurants downtown, and I don't think has ever had formal approval from the board, but has been there historically, at least longer than my tenure here, has always had an umbrella and a chair or a table and chairs out there. But I think that clearly, as we look long-term at the, I know the board's talked about this, at the downtown reconfiguration or redesign, that this is something that's got to be kept in mind, because it is becoming more and more of an issue, and one of the things that we're trying to do is promote greater pedestrian access through the downtown, or greater pedestrian, you know, in other words, park your car and walk and enjoy the downtown and what it has to offer, so, but that's why clearly, if the board is so inclined, the three-foot clearance is a minimum. It's actually, it probably ought to be a little bit more than three feet, it probably ought to be three and a half, just for proper.
Perfect. You know, but I do think it's important to put in provisional and to be revisited in a year. You know, we'd like to accommodate the business, we'd like to see how, if it works well for downtown, then that's great, and for the business, but I think we should revisit it in a year.
I wondered, does it make sense, when I see this, one of the things I think of is, when we've talked about the downtown revitalization and the downtown streetscape project, being able to better accommodate some of these requests in the future, once we're able to repair and renovate some of the infrastructure downtown, does it make sense to, you know, if we do get one in the future that comes down, you know, on the same side, you know, are we going to leave it up to Jack Me to decide, well, you know, this one's 20 feet up, I'll allow this one? I mean, how are we going to, how are we going to handle these requests in the future?
I would, I would say that the process that's before you right now is the appropriate process, it should still come before the Board of Selectmen, and we would make a recommendation to you as to whether it's acceptable or not. So I would not, I agree, Mike, I don't want that to just simply be an administrative process. I think it's important that the board hear what the request is, just much like we do right now, even with A-frames, that, you know, it's not simply something that we would grant internally.
Yeah. My thought of the, the site drop, like the placement in our request right here, has to do more with knowing that we individually said okay for one-year trial, and then it's him doing it, because he gets the three-foot thing and all that sort of stuff, as opposed to just allowing the business owner to put it out there.
Okay. So procedurally, let me ask the question, does the board want to move ahead with a motion with some restrictions, or do we want to have Jack Me and whoever else is appropriate take a quick look at it before we approve something like this? I'm throwing that out to you, Michael.
I don't have a problem with the board accepting the request with the conditions, provided that the building commissioner has approved the sighting of it, given, approved the sighting of it under the conditions authorized by the board.
Okay.
I think that, picking up on Selectman Timson's thoughts, that policies and procedures need to be addressed. It may be premature, but it's always helpful if you have something in front of you as a guideline.
I do agree, but to me, as far as, to set forth a real policy or procedure means we're going to go with it, to me, this is kind of provisional.
Right.
And let's see.
I'm good with that.
Whereas if we do a full policy, it's like we're accepting it before we've done it.
I'm good with that. That's why the term provision.
Provisional, yeah.
That's good, I also like the provisional nature, we can give it a try for a season and.
We like it.
See how it works, so. Nancy, would you like to make a motion? I'm sorry, Chris, did you have a question?
How do you feel about the provisional?
No, I think that makes sense, but should we, I think at a minimum, while Jack Me has to make sure that it's going to conform to zoning, should we have them present what they're going to actually put there, so that we can make sure that it's something that we are in favor of, in other words?
Not an ugly bench?
I, yeah, for lack of a better way to put it, but I mean, I, you know, I don't know, it seems to me that if we're going to do this for the first time, we should at least see what it is that we're saying yes to.
So how about we have Jack, how about we instruct Jack to go out, look at the sites, see what would fit, see what they're thinking, and then before we give them a vote, it comes then back to us again, but also knowing this is all still, this is our intent of provisional?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Or Nancy, we could say yes, subject to review of the final, final plans and final diagrams or whatever it is we got to present.
I was just going to suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we, that you table it until the next meeting. We will communicate with the owner. I will sit with Jack tomorrow, and, I mean, it's a couple of weeks delay, but certainly it's, I think what Chris makes, Chris is saying makes sense in terms of the design. I hadn't really thought of what might go there, so if that's acceptable to the board, we can just go forward with getting them to give us some diagram or picture, or whatever you want to call it, a description of what they're going to put there, and then Jack can weigh in on it from there.
So I'll make a motion to table to our next meeting?
Second. All in favor?
Aye. We have a motion to table to our next meeting, and we're going to have further information then, Chris?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you know what a go/no-go gauge is?
What?
What a go/no-go gauge is? I think those three of us can become go/no-go gauges for sturdiness.
As of time being, just after 7:20, we'll open it up for open forum. Is anybody here who would like to speak? Surprisingly, there's no one here tonight who would like to speak.
Just exhausted from the election.
Yes, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is a request of Boynton School for the annual 5K and 1-mile fun run.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to hold the annual Boynton School fun run, the 5K and 1-mile, and the date is, the date is for Saturday, October 26th, 2013, and they are also, we'll approve that, and then I'll do the.
The banner.
The banner.
Is there a second?
The banner is approved, because it says continual, right, okay. That's it then, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you have an aye, Chris?
I did, I was in unison with you guys.
Thank you. Five, zero, zero. The next item is a vote acceptance of gifts.
Mr. Chairman, members of the.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you, through the raffle that was done by our Veteran Services Committee, they raised $1,008, well done by the committee, that would be deposited in the Veteran Services Gift Account, the gift fund, would request that the board accept the gift.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, you also have a gift, generous gift from Natalie Lee, in the amount of $50 to the Veterans Gift Fund, would request the board's acceptance of the gift.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Thank you for the donation of gifts, of the gifts to the town, that's very generous. The next item on the agenda is a bridge agreement with Comcast. Michael?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, as members of the board know, and the public is aware, we are engaged in ongoing negotiations with Comcast of Massachusetts and New Hampshire and Ohio Inc. for the successor agreement to their current 10-year license to provide cable services to the town of Walpole. The town's contract, current contract with Verizon expires on this Saturday, June 8th, and we are not quite there yet in terms of a final agreement. We did research with our town attorney, as well as work with Comcast, to identify the possibility of a so-called bridge agreement to get us through, so that there is no disruption of service. It was identified that there is no such thing as a bridge agreement that's allowable within the Telecommunications Act, however, the minimum term of three years is, in fact, identified. What we have therefore before the board is essentially the form of a bridge agreement, but it is a three-year and one-day license to Comcast, that would do essentially three things, would maintain the provisions of the existing license, would be in full force and effect. The second thing would be that it would coordinate that all funding would be provided through to the town of Walpole for distribution, and the third item is that it would identify the funding mechanism, should we need to go forward under this plan, of the existing capital grant that was part of the current 10-year license, that the terms would continue going forward. So Bill Hewig has worked with Kathy Maloney to draft this, and would ask that the board endorse this. The intention is, certainly, we're going to continue to move forward with negotiations with Comcast, we have a meeting this Thursday morning at 9:00 AM to continue negotiations, and as soon as that agreement is finalized, it would then take the place of this, so it would not be 10 plus 3, it would be a new 10-year deal, effective upon ratification by the Board of Selectmen and Comcast.
Any comments or questions, Michael?
No, but I'll make a motion to approve the renewal license between the town and Comcast for a term of three years and one day.
Second for discussion.
Any discussion?
Please. I'm going to abstain, because I had no prior involvement with this, however, what I do want to ask is, any time within that three-year period, the new 10-year can be negotiated, is that not correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So in other words, if you adopt this tonight, and on Thursday morning, we reach agreement on a new deal, then the effective date of this would be from Saturday through, essentially, your next meeting, if it's adopted, if we're adopting the next contract, so it's just simply to get us to that point.
Right.
At which point, the new contract will take effect.
And that's because of the lack of the terminology bridging.
Correct, and what's.
All right, I'm good.
What's not in the statute, it's an important point, what is not in the statute is the ability for the licensee to continue to provide services.
Beyond that point.
Without a contract. As counsel said to us, it happens frequently in other communities if the deal isn't reached, and they simply just go on about their business. However, as Cindy will note, we have received a couple of different letters from the Commonwealth noting to us that our license expires on June 8th, and they continue to look for an update, so what we would not want to do, for the lack of due diligence, is to potentially have a break in the service, so to speak.
I did ask the question of Michael and our attorney the other day, why three years and one day, and I guess that's sort of a standard term for an interim agreement, with the understanding that you're going to continue negotiations and replace it quickly, so, it just seemed an odd amount of time, but I guess that's sort of a standard.
I was questioning why the front page did not use the terminology interim.
Yep.
You know, and that's what I wanted, why I wanted to ask the question the way I did.
I know that I had originally thought we could add 60 days to the old agreement, but I guess no agreement can be longer than 10 years, so we need actually to put in place a new agreement, and then, once we're done negotiating, we'll authorize a brand-new 10-year contract, so.
And just as a clarification on that, no successor agreement can be longer than 10 years, your initial agreement can be 15, and that's why the Verizon deal that we're on currently is 15, just for those that might know that we did a 15-year deal with Verizon. Verizon's subsequent renewal will be a 10-year, they would like, obviously, a 10-year deal. And just one note on Verizon, we are, through counsel, obviously reaching out to Verizon as well, to try to make sure both contracts mirror each other in terms of the funding mechanisms, in terms of the 5%.
I think that's a great idea, I'm in favor of, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in ahead of you, I am in favor of having an agreement in place, I don't feel comfortable with the current agreement expiring, so I do like the idea of signing a new agreement that's short-term, and then continuing negotiations. Nancy?
And I did just want to comment that it doesn't tie us into three years, that at some point, if, you know, an agreement can't be made, it's not like we're going to have to wait till three years for this, three years and one day for this to be up.
Yeah, time is still of the essence.
Yep, yep. Would somebody like to make a motion? Oh, sorry, there is a motion?
Stand.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 500.
Uh, no.
01.
I'm sorry. 401.
401.
Thank you, Cliff.
Perfect timing.
We could vote the meeting minutes from May 16th.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, May 16th, and that's it, right?
Yep.
And, oh, just the open, right, hold on, to the executive session, but that's all we had, right? Okay, so yes, I'll make a motion to approve the open meeting minutes from Thursday, May 16th, 2013.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain?
Yeah, I wasn't there.
So 302.
And then, since, just to skip to some new business, I guess it would be.
Yeah, we can jump right into new business.
I was wondering, for our next meeting, if we could discuss either having it on the Tuesday before or the Tuesday after, because the 18th, which is when we were going to be scheduled, is going to be the groundbreaking for the press box at the high school, and, you know, with that conflict, I was wondering if we could change our day.
So that we're scheduled right now for the 18th?
Yes.
Which is with the groundbreaking?
Yes.
Do you want to move it later?
I'm not sure what works better for Cindy, because I know it sometimes will end us.
It's not for me, it's the room availability, June 25th, the following Tuesday, this room is open.
Okay.
If you want to.
And we don't have anything, though, on that day that is a time certain or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
How do people feel about that, any issues?
I need a calendar anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'll give.
So you don't already have it penciled in? There we go.
It's not very working.
It's out of batteries at the moment.
Is it hooked up to Wi-Fi yet?
It'll come back.
So, Michael, while you stepped away, the issue that came up is, could we push our January 18th meeting to, sorry, June 18th meeting to.
I really need a calendar now.
Because there's going to be a groundbreaking ceremony for the press box project, and that works for me, so.
Yeah, no issue.
No issue.
Okay.
Chris, are you going to be around June 25th?
Aye, I plan to be.
Excellent. All right, do we need to do anything, or is that just a schedule set?
It's just a scheduling.
Okay.
I feel three remote call-ins.
Can't do three. Any other new business, which are starting, new business, Mr. Berry?
Sure, two things, one, wanted to see if maybe our board, preferably this month, could maybe consider a workshop for the purposes of discussing a MassWorks grant application. I know we talked about it last year, and we just weren't able to kind of, I think, pull things together. The deadline for the application is September 10th, Stephanie is the person I'd assume would be doing the application, we have three full months to apply for it, you know, whether we go for something small or something large, a big program like that, I think we should have an application, and I'd hate to miss it two years in a row, but I think we, as a board, you know, working with Mike, need to identify what is the best project to apply for, and what project gives us the greatest chance for success of getting some money, so I think that's a big one, it's a pretty involved application, but I think it's certainly worthy of discussion, and I think perhaps could be done on a workshop type, we had other issues that we needed to tackle, but I think time is somewhat of the essence, so. That's one item, second item is.
Do you want to talk about that item for a minute first?
I was just looking at the calendar, I don't know if we can get space on either the 12th or the 13th, it's a Wednesday or Thursday night.
I'm not available either, doesn't matter, either one, for me.
We could maybe even do 6:30, if it was easier for people.
Well.
I couldn't go any earlier than 6:00 myself, but I could do any meeting that.
The 12th, I could definitely do 6:30, Thursday, you know, just traffic out of Boston, I get out at 5:30.
Either night can work for me. Chris, did you have a preference on one of those two nights?
Can you say them again, because they came through a little garble.
June 12th, a Wednesday, or Thursday, June 13th, as a workshop to discuss the grants?
I prefer the 12th.
That'd work for me, Cliff, is that a good day for you?
I'm retired.
Okay, that sounds great, I like the idea of a workshop, and I think that's a.
6:30 on the 12th?
6:30.
I mean, how long do you anticipate that to last?
Well, I mean, I would suggest this, if there's any other item that's workshop-related, I think part of it would be, you know, if, if I were to take a step back, I would maybe see if Stephanie could maybe work with Mike, and maybe kind of have for us a menu of potential ideas that we could kind of look at to discuss.
Bum, blam, blank.
Yeah, I mean, so I think that's kind of what I'd be looking for to, you know, for you guys to kind of, I think we know what some ones potentially are, but perhaps there might be other ones that we don't know. I would also say, though, if there's any other workshop-type item, I mean, I think the discussion, you know, I think it would be a 45-minute, maybe an hour discussion, maybe, but if there's something that we identified, that maybe we'd move along a little bit more swiftly, if there's another room for something that we'd want to tackle in a workshop night, I think, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Thanks, Cliff.
One of the things that this board is going to have to be thinking about, what I might call workshop-related type things, for example, I would personally like to bring up a modified charter review as a conversation. We also have what I will refer to as informational forums that are going to be before us, such as 40Bs, both the 200 units at Fairfield, as well as the 174, which I do see on the administrator's report tonight. There would be the reach-outs as planned and programmed for the McGuire Report, and I realize that none of these may fit into what I call new or old business, but certainly, it fits into the character of the program and calendar planning that the board's going to have to do. And also, with respect to that, I noted with interest, very quickly after town meeting, that there was a presentation of a draft camera policy, and usually drafts are debated, negotiated, and things of that nature, and then approved, and I think the community could have favorably benefited from that type of discussion. I'm not arguing with the vote, I'm just making suggestions.
Okay, thank you, Cliff. Maybe on some of those other items that you just mentioned, that we know are sort of forward-looking, that we all take a look at our calendars and think about when some of those may start to get scheduled in, I think some of them are a few months away, but some of them are definitely quicker, so that'd be good, we could start looking at.
Yeah, just from a visioning perspective.
Yep, I think that's great. Nancy?
To go along with Cliff's ideas, and then of thinking of where we're going to fit them in, how about, we have our goals to do, the objectives for the year, that maybe if Cindy, you could just email out last year's goals, and maybe we can put on, you know, make, so that's what, a week away, a week and a day, that we could put together our goals and have them emailed to you, Cindy, by, you know, before the meeting, so that you could hand out each other's, and that way, we could have each other's goals, have looked at.
Which meeting would this be?
The 12th, the workshop, and that way, during, we won't find, not necessarily be finalizing our goals, but we could discuss them, and that might actually, you know, talk about the past year's goals, and then see each other's goals, and kind of work out that calendar.
I might even suggest on goals and objectives, I mean, I like that we have goals and objectives, my worry about them right now is there's, it's a long list, there's too many items, so, one of the things, maybe we can review last year's goals and objectives, and talk about, do we want to stay with the same approach, which is a big list, or do we want to narrow it down to a shorter list of more actionable items? That might be a good sort of discussion, and then, once we have that discussion, we can move on to the next one, would that work, or?
So a discussion about discussing on how we want to.
A discussion about last year's goals and objectives, maybe a quick review of where we stand on them.
I personally do like the idea that we have goals, visions, and they, I do think that they should kind of cover the entire town, which is a broad thing. I do like the idea of having action items that come from our goals, that we expect to be hopefully completed within a year, but I do think that, like a fluffy goals list, shows the flavor of the board and the intent, so when, you know, people look at it 25 years from now, they get the flavor of what we were thinking, but yet, we also realize that we have this short-term action.
I'd be happy with, I would just like to end up with some actionable items.
Yeah.
And I do understand where you're coming from with the bigger vision lists, and then narrow it down to some actionable items.
Remember the old SMART process, specific, measurable, achievable, responsible, and timed appropriate, SMART, that's the thing to keep in mind at all of these.
That's what we've been missing for the last two years.
I, I don't have any real input on it, other than that, you know, I'm happy to do the goals and objectives, kind of along the way that we, I think we've been moving towards having action items, I mean, that was the whole idea of everyone having some specific items that they present, and then we just kind of keep the overall, I mean, that general body of goals and objectives that makes it a long list, like Nancy said, that's kind of our, it's almost like a policy statement as much as anything else, and then these specific goals that you. a policy statement as much as anything else. And then these specific goals that you wanna try and accomplish within a year, that kind of fits what, what Mark's talking about. Um, you know, it may be healthy to just discuss the way that we're, we put them together. I mean, maybe there should be two lists, a policy list and a, and I think we started to kind of move towards that, um, when Eric was, was setting it up, uh, in, in the last year or two. But, um, but I agree. Let's, let's, let's have a policy type of, uh, goals and objectives that, that gives us, uh, foundation. And then I like the idea of having some action items. Everyone, if every, if every selectman is working towards to getting at least one thing that's their, uh, uh, you know, that they're passionate about, passionate about, uh, completed in this year, uh, we're gonna be a successful board.
Thanks, Chris. Michael, do you have anything?
No, I, I just think separating, separating the two items, because I think some of them are, are, some of the goals are project-related in that it's something that we know we can accomplish. For example, you know, uh, the Mass Works grant, you know, that could be, that would, something that would be on our goals and objective list, but that is something that is clearly measurable as to whether or not we can, um, accomplish that. And certainly, I think some of the other things that have been on the list are certainly guiding principles, things that we as a board philosophically and policy-wise wanna continue to approach throughout the year. So I think maybe, um, parsing out some of the ones that are more project-related and are more, um, more have kind of a set timeframe, is that this is what we want to accomplish this year. Um, I think that separating them out a little bit, maybe doing some sifting, I don't think is a, is a bad approach, so.
Okay, so I think what I heard from everybody is that we wanna have Cindy send us the current goals and objectives. We'll take a quick look at them. If people have any new items or changes to the list, please try to get them back to each other, distributed to each other before, uh, the meeting on the twelfth. Then on the twelfth, we'll look at the bigger picture and decide if we integrate in the task items, or if they become two separate pieces. We, we can sort of work through that. Michael?
Um, we will put together, uh, I'll have Stephanie put together a kind of, as Mike said, a menu approach on the, uh, Mass Works program. And also, um, the board would have the opportunity to talk about some of the other items that, uh, you brought, you all brought up. My, my request is this. In terms of the timing of when you would like to move some of these items, I know that, that we, we talked about the, um, Maguire Report. That needs further debate and discussion by the board, and then ultimately presentation. Um, there are a number of things that are out there. I don't wanna get us ahead of the Board of Selectmen, clearly as staff. I would like to be responding to the requests of the board in terms of the appropriate timing. So, we stand ready to, uh, move those forward at your direction, if you will.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other new business? Cliff, do you have any, uh, new business tonight?
No, I'm good.
I did have one to just, um, more of an update, um, just to update the board on, uh, the status of the Peggy Lawton Building on Washington Street.
You want to update, or you want me to update?
Oh, no, you can update.
Oh. Um, the, uh, at, the Town of Walpole had, uh, issued a demand that the property be made safe, and in this case, uh, removed, the front building at the Washington Street property, um, after much back and forth with the attorney for the property owner, as well as our town attorney, Alana Quirk, uh, followed up by, uh, the issuance, uh, what was the issuance of an administrative search warrant, which ended up not being necessary, uh, to, uh, utilize. Uh, Jack Me had gone so far as to, uh, assemble a board of survey, to do a formal inspection on the site, which was obviously gonna be the, uh, purpose of the administrative search warrant. Um, we received, uh, positive communication from, um, the attorney representing Peggy Lawton, that they will in fact endeavor by next Friday, the fourteenth, to act, to remove that front building. The front building will be taken down. So, we are staying on top of that.
I just, well, I wanna give a, a thank you to, uh, you and, uh, Commissioner Me and, uh, Chief Bailey. And, um, I know for a number of neighbors, uh, in that area have been putting up with that building for quite a long time. This is a long time coming, and I think it's a positive development. And I do wanna thank Peggy Lawton, uh, for working with us and avoiding, I think, um, what, what, you know, could have been potentially turned into a difficult legal situation back and forth, and thank them for recognizing, uh, what was in the best interests of, of, I think, not only their, um, their interests, but for the Town of Walpole's and the immediate neighborhood as well, so.
It, our number one, uh, mission on any one of these is safety, uh, and is primarily the safety of any first responder, and in this case primarily our firefighters that would potentially have to enter that building. Um, and that's the way we approached this right from the outset. And so, um, I wanna thank, certainly, I appreciate it, Mike, and uh, thank Jack, and certainly the work of Alana Quirk on this.
Uh, before we jump to the administrator's report, since we've started new business, is there any old business that anybody would like to discuss?
Chris?
Chris, any old business?
No, outside.
We should try this more often. Uh, Michael, would you like to give us the town administrator's report?
Sure, I have a few items, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, we have, it's kind of one of those that just boggles the mind, uh, with respect to Chapter Ninety. Um, the administration, Governor Patrick and his administration had put forward a request for three-hundred million dollars to be utilized for, uh, by the Commonwealth through a bond bill for Chapter Ninety for the year. Um, the amount that would have been provided to the Town of Walpole under that provision would be just about one-point-one million dollars. That's up from the seven-hundred thousand that we have for the current year, um, or at least the expected seven-hundred thousand for the current year. Instead, uh, following an appropriation of the full three-hundred million by the legislature, uh, what we were awaiting at that time was a terms bill, uh, for the borrowing that the legislature does as a matter of protocol following a bond authorization. Um, but prior to that, the administration sent out a notice to the communities, uh, Walpole's is attached to my update here, that they're only gonna release a hundred-and-fifty million dollars of Chapter Ninety funding, which puts Walpole's amount at just over five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, MMA is absolutely on top of this. Unfortunately, it doesn't necessarily look like it's a, uh, a matter that the legislature can just simply override. This is, uh, posturing, uh, for lack of a better description. Uh, the administration is still trying to move forward with a nearly two-billion-dollar, uh, transportation program, and, uh, the legislature is so far having none of it. Uh, they're having some of it, I should say, in the context of a smaller, uh, program. And the administration has now made Chapter Ninety a, uh, a subject of debate, if you will, and a, uh, a sacrifice, is a, um, I guess is being held hostage as part of the overall transportation situation debate. Um, I can absolutely understand that there is a need for enhanced transportation funding in the Commonwealth. Um, we look no further than what just happened a week ago in, uh, Washington State, just north of Seattle, that none of us want that to happen here. And there are significant amounts of money that still need to be spent on our roads and bridges, uh, to bring them up to standards. Uh, I truly hope that between the legislature and the governor, that they can resolve the ongoing dispute, because holding Chapter Ninety hostage or making that the sacrificial lamb in the overall debate doesn't help us meet the same demands that we have locally to improve our own roads and bridges. So, um, just wanted to give the board a heads-up on that one.
Nancy?
Can we make a recommendation that they send, spend, send the money that they've been sending to dead people?
They fail to understand that reform is their greatest source of revenue. And posturing is a perfect way to describe what he's knowing with Chapter Ninety. At some point, I'd like to chat with this board about sending our voice as a united voice towards reform.
Uh, we have, uh, received word that one, that Mass DOT will be doing a Route One A milling and overlaying, temporary paving project on various stretches of, uh, One A, uh, from roughly, uh, several hundred feet north of Winter Street, up to, uh, roughly the Norfolk Street area, and then picking up, actually, it's up as far as, um, uh, Spring Valley Drive, and then a stretch, uh, north of the center of town, uh, in the area of Fisher Street, that they're gonna be doing some milling and overlay. We don't have a date specific on this. They have asked the town to reply to them with any areas of concern. Uh, I have, uh, provided some commentary, uh, to Charlie Quigley, who's coordinating the response for the town, uh, as well as other department heads, um, have as well, about some drainage issues that we have along One A and other potential concerns. So, this is, this is just a stopgap, uh, because the road, especially southbound, especially in the area of Raphael's, uh, is just blowing out. It's not gonna survive another winter.
Nancy?
So, this is, didn't they turn this over to us?
No, this has not been turned over to the town, yet we have not accepted, uh, One A. It has not been discontinued as a state road.
Wasn't that the intent?
The intent is, once they rebuild from the center to Norwood, then that stretch would become discontinued as a state roadway and become town ownership, uh, only upon a full reconstruction. This is not reconstruction. This is just strictly stopgap.
I thought when they had done it, it, however many years ago, no?
We've never, they've never done it. That's, yeah.
Okay. It's just, we talked about it, and it's never happened.
And then we talked about it again, and then we talked about it, and you recall a few of those conversations as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, staying on the Mass DOT theme, um, and let me back up for one second. With respect to the One A paving, um, we're not sure when this is gonna happen, and we may find out the moment that the machines show up on One A.
July third.
So, uh, we'll do the best that we can. Uh, we have had, uh, a good communication with the district, so we'll try to stay on top of that part. Um, I have been asked to go to a meeting, uh, regarding the Walmart project as it relates to Route One and Twenty Seven intersection. Uh, I'm off the seventeenth, but I am gonna go in and meet with the Highway Administrator. I've asked Chief Stillman to attend as well. Um, that's the-
For the lights?
It's, that, basically what's happened is that, um, one section of DOT, which didn't talk to another section of DOT, has realized that the, um, project is moving forward to install the lights on Twenty Seven at Walmart's driveway by Walmart. Uh, they have done some, uh, review of data at the Route One and Twenty Seven intersection, and now have desired to try to incorporate some potential improvements there, also into Walmart's, basically on Walmart's dime. And, um, that's not necessarily doable, if you will, and has the potential of, uh, jeopardizing the entire Route Twenty Seven project. So, we're gonna go in and hear this conversation on the seventeenth and represent Walpole's needs, which the primary need that the town has is improving the intersection at the Walmart driveway. So, while I understand DOT's interests, um, with respect to Route One and Twenty Seven, that's not necessarily a Walmart situation, so.
Well, and, I mean, they designed that when Big Y was there, and then got to review it, what, two years after that? And they had made some changes from their review at that point, two or three years?
Yeah, they had Big Y do some substantial changes there.
Yeah.
Repave the intersection, and then shortly thereafter came and milled the entire intersection and took up all of the, like, sensors that Big Y had paid to put in the roadway.
Yes.
So, yeah, that, that intersection's got a interesting past.
History.
I will keep you posted on that. Uh, today, we had the opportunity to talk a little bit about, uh, the, uh, proposed project on Michaela's Way. It is a residential component for, um, young adults with, uh, varying disabilities, whether or not developmental disability or autism or what have you. Um, there are some, uh, concerns, uh, in the neighborhood, as well as, uh, within, uh, the school community as it relates to the neighboring Burton Middle School. Um, there is also an appeal, uh, to the building, Commissioner's issuance of a permit. That will be heard before the Zoning Board of Appeals. It's tentatively scheduled for, it is scheduled for next Wednesday, but there have been, there's been a request, uh, to, um, continue that or to delay that, uh, for a period of time. I'm not sure what the outcome of that, um, discussion was. But, uh, this afternoon, I spoke with the attorney representing, uh, the, uh, project proponent, and asked that an informational meeting be set up, uh, so that at least, uh, a couple of different things. One informational meeting with department heads and school staff, so that they can understand what's actually being proposed out there for the project, and also to provide the same for the community. Um, an informational meeting on this, so, uh, we can get better informed as to what's there. It is a, uh, what we do truly understand is it is a proposed, um, lifestyle learning, uh, environment, uh, that would qualify, uh, as it did in Norwood's case, under the Dover Amendment, uh, which would exempt it as an educational use. Uh, I have, uh, as of today's discussion, asked Jack, uh, and we will also follow up with Alana Quirk, um, for a, uh, an in-town perspective as well. Uh, we also met today and talked about the, uh, financial impact process that is underway now, as it relates to the proposed Forty B on Moose Hill Road. Financial impact being, uh, revenues versus potential expenditures for the Town of Walpole. Um, there is, uh, this is a proposed one-hundred-and-seventy-four unit project, which as it sits today, and uh, there's, there's an asterisk beside this, obviously, uh, there are proposed forty percent one-bedroom and sixty percent two-bedroom units in that, uh, complex, uh, twenty-five percent of which would be affordable at the eighty percent mean, median? Me, mini?
Median.
Median income, um, uh, level. So, uh, we did not really get into specifics of the project per se today, but there was a healthy debate as to what ought to be considered as true expenditures or costs to the Town of Walpole, uh, and not, um, uh, just a simple, um, carte blanche that it's a revenue positive, because I think that we have enough experience with the Preserve to know that there are a number of factors that get built into this. And I'll pause for a moment, because I know both, uh, Mark and Cliff were there, as well as at the Michaela's Way, uh, discussion, if you have any-
I'll view it to the chair.
I, I would jump in first on the Forty B project. I, you know, understanding that they don't need to work with us if they don't want to, uh, is important for people to remember. I, I do like the idea of them doing the financial analysis, and I did like the fact that they came in and, and asked some good questions. Uh, it would be good to understand the economics of that Forty B development, um, and how it fits for the Town of Walpole, what impact it has on school, police, fire, all those kind of things. So, I, I think that is a positive sign. Um, I did hear some other good things from them, and, uh, it will be interesting to see how that, how that plays out. Cliff, did you have anything you wanted to add on the Forty B?
I, I think that, uh, the, uh, gentleman, was it John Connery?
John Connery.
Um, is a polished professional. He knows his business. And he, uh, he was, uh, very capable of fielding a wide variety of questions that came from the audience, and, uh, mostly , uh, town personnel. And he was questioned very heavily and very severely.
Which is good, 'cause that hopefully will lead to some numbers that are in the reasonable range, and we'll, we'll have a good understanding. I-
And I think his, his approach, which was to not, um, exclude, uh, data from the Preserve was very positive.
Absolutely.
Hmm.
Nancy?
John Connery, is that the, um, John Connery?
Same Fairfield.
Uh, and so, okay.
Yep.
So, the, the zoning and planning.
Yeah, he knows his, he knows his stuff.
He's the guy.
Yeah.
And, um, I do, um, wanna make sure that through this process, if it does move forward, that we, uh, make sure that we do the inclusionary for, um, the Walpole connection, uh, Walpole preference.
You know, to that end, um, in mentioning inclusionary, I know it's been presented to the Planning Board, and I don't think that they've embraced the concept as of yet, but I do think that, uh, at least this board should have, begin to have that dialogue going forward, uh, about inclusionary zoning as it relates to development in the town. At least have the conversation, because we go through this process, and to date, we haven't really had, other than the Preserve, it's been ten years since we've had a major project actually commence. I do believe that these two, uh, meaning this one and Woodworkers, are very serious about moving forward. And I believe that, um, we need to be cautious about any future developments not taking away from that ten percent threshold, that, you know, the town has, is, you're, you're under the gun when you're under ten percent. And for every non-affordable unit that comes in, um, that takes away from the ten percent quotient, so.
You can, you can look at municipal government as, uh, being attacked by state thinking. Uh, one of the prospects going on at the state level right now is to mandate that ten percent, uh, be demanded to be three-bedroom.
That's a killer. That's a huge killer. Lincoln and I had a long conversation about that, and what the potential financial impact is to the town. I mean, we're talking several hundred thousand approaching a million-dollar impact, if that's the case, so.
But it sounds like a savings to me to the cities.
Well, it's the urbanization.
Exactly.
It's the urbanization of suburbia.
And their school budgets.
You know, I mean, that's what it is.
I did want to also comment on the Michaela's Way project. I think that, you know, a lot of the discussion in the room when we were talking about that is the fact that it's a great unknown to all of us. You know, they had applied for a building permit. Somebody has now challenged that, and it's going before the ZBA. But no one really came forward to the town and to the schools to talk about the idea of the project and what they were hoping to do. I, I think that if it's done well, and it's done right, and they, they do work with the town, I think there's some great potential, especially for those families, you know, if we can tie it into some Walpole people who have disabled kids, autistic kids, kids who are working their way through the schools, and the schools can handle them up until they're, I think, 22 or 23. And we've got some programs that this could be a, a great opportunity for them to move the kids on. Problem right now is it's a great unknown. We don't know anything or enough. So, I do like the idea that, you know, we've requested that they hold some informational meetings and try to provide people with some facts. I, I love fact-based discussions. I always get nervous when people are talking about things without enough facts, so that, I thought that was the good part of our discussion, and hopefully they're in a position to be able to do that.
There's a meeting tomorrow morning with the attorney and Mr. Roach, so I expect to hear back sometime tomorrow as to their availability.
Great. Cliff, did you have anything?
Yeah, the, the aspect of, of the unknown has created a little bit of fervor on the part of, of the citizenry. They have no idea realistically what this is all about. And so therefore, you, you start conjuring up every possible deleterious thing that could be imaginable. With respect to the reach-out, that was the mistake that was, was made. There was no reach-out. And I think that the town, in its leadership today, took that step to try and calm the populace to a point of where they can listen to what the proposal is and then make up their own mind, but without the fear factors involved.
Nancy.
And, and again, hometown preference is, you know, is always the preference, you know? And to, sorry, to jump back to the, the 40B, did the affordable housing, I forget, what do we call it now?
Housing partnership.
Housing partnership. Did they weigh in on this? Were they there?
They were not there today.
They were not there today.
This was more just an administrative request that Barbary Homes had to meet with town. They basically wanted, the three, the three entities that they want to spend the most time with to understand cost needs or cost factors. School Department clearly far and away, but also police and fire, and what those costs are. We also mentioned, and I mentioned it about water and sewer, in that we have clearly ongoing costs resulting from the preserve. We've spent some substantial money dealing with the outflow from that, so that can't be overlooked in terms of ongoing expenses. But no, I think the housing partnership has weighed in on it, Nancy. I just don't know what the outcome was.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, I mean, there are a committee that is appointed by us, that I think going forward, we should invite them. I think they should be at the table. I mean, because, you know, they're the ones who are the keepers of the plan. They're the ones that are supposed to be implementing potential changes, and it is in that plan, the mention of the hometown preference and things like that, that the way the town should be going with, going forward. Now, I think it's important to have them at the table for all of that. And then even with the Michaela's Way project, I don't know if that would at some point tie into our affordable numbers. If it wouldn't, there's no way to look into that?
I don't.
You, you looked into it? Okay. Because I was just wondering in the end, but, okay.
No, but continuing along that thought process, there certainly still are components of that thought from a rental perspective that can enter into that number. And it's something as we move forward, we ought to be looking at.
I shouldn't say no off the top of my head. I will follow up on it again, only to the context, now that I'm thinking of it, that there may be the ability for like a Section 8 funding to help support the rental, but where it's not a, where essentially they're bedrooms, and they're not a housing unit.
Seven, seven clients, two staff is the plan.
So, I don't think that an individual bedroom, let's say, which is not a housing unit, has counted in the past.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'll follow up though.
Yeah, let's see what we can do, and if it does fit anywhere. And then, you know, if you look at it that way, and it's seven bedrooms and seven students, I mean, I, I bet you there are enough families that, in this town alone, that could potentially have that need, that it could be a great option to keep our kids, young adults closer by.
Understood.
It's interesting, because argumentatively, the definition of family is going to be at the forefront of, of the legal debate.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, that's an interesting point.
Michael.
Just wanted to add a, as far as the housing partnership, I know that they're seriously in want of members. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, they might only have three active members. And so I would add a, absolutely, we want to engage them, but I think probably see what we can do to try and bolster their membership with two big projects and close to, you know, 400 units potentially being laid out there. You know, it, it is probably more important now than ever that we have kind of an engaged, active housing partnership to try and deal with and respond to some of these needs. My, my second follow-up is, when this was created, Mike, the housing partnership, I forget the legislation that allowed the creation of it, but when it was first created, that gave us a one-year period that we had a housing production plan that we could have turned away a two-year, so.
Well, let me, let me, can I, want me to?
Yeah, can, can you take us, take me through that process historically?
Sure.
And then answer whether or not, if that's something we could do again to?
It's a great op, great opportunity to update it. This is the Chris Timson Housing Production Plan. Okay, Nancy too. The, the town went.
We'll have to phone in to get respect.
I guess I do.
The town went forward two years ago, two, three years ago, and created a planned production plan, a housing production plan.
BNPIC.
What that's, was very involved in that as well. What that basically said is that the town of Walpole has to create a percentage, and I think it has to create 10% of the 10% units to be able to, to withstand an unfriendly 40B. So, in other words, having the plan itself doesn't allow you to stave off a 40B project. Building units in accordance with that plan would then allow you to hold off an unfriendly 40B component for a period of time. Now, the plan needs to be recertified currently. The town of Walpole has engaged with PGC consultants, and they are actively working with Stephanie on updating that plan, and I hope to have that back here in short time for the board to accept it and then file back with the HCD.
So, in thinking on this road, how about we add that to the workshop of how we're going to, our plan of attack of revitalizing that committee? Because I do think there's already been enough kind of stir in the community, and with this other project coming and things like that, that this might be our time to be able to put it out there and figure out how we want to increase this. And even just, you know, plan of attack of a couple meetings, a couple, and information, something in the paper, you know? Can we just throw that on?
I think, Mark, you said it right at the outset, and I just want to pick up on it if I may. One of the biggest challenges that, that happens in this type of situation is that it, it comes forward, whether it's Moose Hill Road or it's Woodworkers again, there's an immediate reaction, especially from the neighborhood or even the school district, that no, this isn't, we can't allow this. And what is beyond our control is that ability not to allow it, especially under a 10% threshold. And I keep going back to 2000. The town of Walpole had the greatest argument, I would say, that's ever been put before the Housing Appeals Committee on denying a 40B, when the, when Gatehouse proposed the preserve. All of the factors, public safety, public infrastructure, lack of a true neighborhood area, were all factors that were built into that argument.
And all proven to be true.
Yet died on, on the vine at the Housing Appeals Committee. That being the case, the town needs to be very realistic with how it proposes, to, how it intends to deal with these projects, because we've got an, we, the only experience we have so far is a negative one. We lost. And I don't think, I, I would certainly not want to be the one to recommend to you that we do the same thing over again, and that we've learned from it, and we know what the mitigation needs are for the town. We know that we need to talk mitigation for neighborhoods. And that's not to acquiesce and simply say, sure, come on in. But that is to simply say, hey, we understand where you are, and we understand what the law is, but we also clearly understand what the needs of the town are, and you need to be realistic with those. Because working with someone to a point of not being able to agree on a proposed development is likely to be more successful than, at, at an appeal than simply putting a roadblock up at the outset.
Agreed, and just to throw it out there too, comes to mind, Jonathan, Veterans Agent, I think is kind of a, a good town hall person to know, knowing with our needs and the potential needs of the amount of veterans that we have or are going to have, to have somebody involved in this.
Okay.
You know? But anyway, I think that we should just start to think about.
Yep.
Who would be important, key people that we think should be on this sort of committee, and then how we want to go about attracting them.
Good idea.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the EDIC is scheduled to meet next Monday night. I will be attending that. At the same time, the Shore and Water Commissioners are having their rate-setting hearing. The EDIC, we're going to begin, again, a fresh look at options with respect to the South Street Parcel, the East-Only Side. But what also is part of that dialogue commences tomorrow night is a community meeting hosted by the EPA here in Town Hall regarding the Superfund site and the, the siting of that groundwater treatment facility. That was part of the Record of Decision and is being constructed there. There, it is being constructed in an area that is adjacent to certain homes and properties along Clock Ave. So, at our request, EPA, they are going to host a public meeting to talk a little bit about what's going to happen and the process involved.
Where is that meeting?
I believe it's right here at 7:00 tomorrow night.
Is there a way that, that could be filmed so that it can be available for people to see? Because especially the, the Superfund site, it, and what its status is, it always just kind of gets thrown from the back of the room. And I think to have what the EPA is presenting actually filmed and then available and to be viewed would be great.
I will look to our local access technician, and if that's, if that's a possibility, Pete, to do.
Want to talk about it off-air or?
Yeah, sure. We'll see if anybody's available tomorrow night.
Yeah, I think that, that it'd be great information for the people in the town to be able to have.
Okay, if we can pull it off.
Who's the new Dave Letterer?
Oh, Rich? I cannot remember who Rich is.
We've, we've lost interface with our, like, 10, 15-year long-term EPA rep.
We, we now have.
We've outlived his retirement.
EPA is, as they said to me on the phone, that the, that this siting process for this treatment facility is taking nine months, and I told them the cleanup's taken 30 years, so I'm okay with the nine months.
Michael.
I wanted to see if we could schedule perhaps a joint selectmen's EDIC walkthrough of the Superfund property as much as we can, because we've talked about it for a number of years. I, I've never been able to walk the site. I've only seen photos and, and, you know, Google Earth, but I, I'd at some point just like to take a walkthrough and see some of these things firsthand, because we continue to, to talk about them. I understand, you know, walking through the building and whatnot are things that we're obviously not going to want to do, but as much as is walking to the property and, and kind of seeing some of these sites, I know it would be enormously beneficial to me. And, you know, I don't know the last time anyone's, or if anyone here has ever taken a walkthrough and kind of had a tour, but I, I know I would benefit from it, so.
I think that'd be a good idea.
We're spending, someone is spending 13 and a half million dollars to put the absolute most beautiful apron around two ugly buildings you'd ever want to see in your life. It's absurd.
Spend 13 and a half million dollars on what should be a $25 million project.
So, maybe, you know, obviously while the weather's good, maybe sometime, you know, this month, if it was possible.
I will see, I'll see what we can do.
And people could, could opt in.
It might, it might need to be something informal, but we'll try to put it together.
Okay.
I recommend we pick one of Mike's vacation days.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We are going to, again, apply for the State Parks Grant. This is the one that we were looking at last year when we determined that there were some substantial improvements that are needed at the center waiting pool. Good news is, is that we look like we've been able to at least fix some of the plumbing issues there to, to have it hold water. But there are ADA upgrades that are required, and we need to make some enhancements at those pools, primarily the waiting pool. But there are also some things that we talked about at Department Head Meeting yesterday as it relates to the playground with additional benches for parents that are there, some upgrades, if you will, to the safety of the playground equipment. We did just make some changes over there. Replaced a lot of chains and safety, for safety purposes. So, it, it's, it's in need of a little bit of a facelift. We're not looking at gazebos, if you will, but we are looking at some, some sprucing up, if you will, on that property. So, Stephanie is actively working with Donnie Anderson and now Barbara Blank on this to put together the application for the park money.
But the seal will stay.
The what?
The seal.
Seal.
There's a seal in the middle. I don't think the fountain part of the seal works, though.
I'll make sure that the seal stays.
Okay.
Obviously, I have not been in the waiting pool, so.
That's been a long time.
And I have, as you can see, a handful of dates that I need to use between now and the 30th. What's not on here, Cindy, and I apologize, did we get the letter from, for the fireworks?
We did that.
That's all done?
Yeah, we did that.
You were in the berkshires?
She was here.
Oh.
Last meeting.
Did you? Oh, great. Okay, so that's all done, so I'll be in parade mode shortly.
Well, some things never change.
Michael.
Question I brought up last year about whether or not we could do a gift account for the fireworks. I believe it's the town of Westport is doing home rule legislation.
I saw that.
That would allow them to put a check off on their tax bill to support the fireworks. I bring it up just as kind of an FYI to keep it in the back of your mind. I think Walpole, among other things, is known for its fireworks. I happen to have a front row seat to it where I live. It's just a great thing.
Is that an invitation?
It is an invitation to the front lawn. But you got to get there early.
Yes, you do.
But it's just a great thing that we have every year, and I know we're fortunate that we have an anonymous donor that is able to come in and save the day every year. You know, how long and we can continue to count on that generosity, I can't say, but I, I certainly know that I would never want there to, to be a day where the fireworks wouldn't be as great as they are, as they have been, certainly since I've grown up. So, just something to keep in mind, maybe for next year, but it is possible to set up some type of local funding for it, and maybe next year it's something we can kick the tires on.
It, it makes me ask the next question. If somebody does, who is listening and does want to make a donation, should that be going through the Recreation Department?
Yes, right now, yes. Or stop over to the fire station too, because that's all set up to, to be handled there as well.
Great.
They have very cute t-shirts on sale this year.
And through you to Selectman Snuffer, you would again like your spot on top of the fire truck for the parade. the fire truck for the parade.
Sure.
Okay.
That would be great. They tell me that they can get me from all corners.
We'll have your helmet and ready to go.
Hair hat.
Hair hat.
My hair hat.
Any other business?
Thank you.
Just one quick thing. While you're doing the looksee into the, into the town's home rule petition, take a look at the home rule petition being fostered by Town of Norton on 40Bs. It's interesting reading.
There's actually been some pretty interesting. I think a town out in Metro West is actually seeking an exemption from prevailing wage for projects under $100,000. I mean, this, whether or not that one goes through with a 40B, I think it's still an interesting statement nonetheless to pursue. I'm not familiar with the Norton one, but interested in learning about that one.
Michael?
I apologize. It was something I was going to do at the beginning of my update and I neglected. I too would like to congratulate both Mike and Cliff. Welcome you both back. We've enjoyed working with you in the past and certainly look forward to it. And I did, as I missed last week, I do want to thank Eric for his three years. I know that it was a very difficult decision that he anguished over about not running again, but his service to this town was outstanding in that period of time and I wish him the best and not only appreciated his leadership, but certainly appreciated his friendship, so.
I agree.
Agree.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
What's this, this comp?